Good evening and welcome to the April 3rd, 2023 meeting of City Council. Could you please rise and join me in my pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Saunders?
Here.
Spinks?
Here.
Janudas?
Here.
Lou Hardy?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Asbury?
Here.
Kochi?
Here.
Uh, Council, you have the minutes of the work session of March 20th, 2023. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Janudas? Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes. Uh, you have the minutes of the regular meeting of March 20th, 2023. Any corrections to those? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Smith, second by Asbury? Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes. Uh, no presentations tonight, and under all business ordinance 2023, we wish to, uh, table it, but you can go ahead and read it.
In ordinance approving the community reinvestment area agreement between the City of Bedford and 14735 Holdings LLC, doing business as Cleveland Tank and Supply located at 15 Hemisphere Way, consisting of 5.8 acres of permanent parcel number 814-07-001, and authorizing an execution of that agreement and declaring an emergency. Can I get a motion to table that until next meeting?
By Spinks, second by Janudas? Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes. Ordinance number 21-23.
An ordinance approving a community reinvestment area agreement between the City of Bedford and Lake Shore Electric Corporation located at 5 Hemisphere Way, consisting of 7.46 acres of that same parcel, 814-07-001, and authorizing execution of that agreement and declaring an emergency.
A motion for, uh, to table by Asbury, second by Saunders? Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes. Reports. Mr. Secretary of Management.
Thank you, Mayor. Seven, few items briefly here. Uh, follow up to Councilman Saunders' question at the last meeting. I did get clarification on the Northfield Road Bridge. Uh, they're gonna be starting in July of '23, and it will not be completed this year. They actually have a completion date of November of '24, although I don't believe it'll take that long.
Yeah.
Um, but they are extending it out that, that far. But as far as the start date, it's not May, uh, it is July. Uh, and then as, once we receive more details, we have not had pre-con meeting yet, but once we do, uh, I will share, uh, further information. Just want to, uh, actually, I might be taking this from John. John, I apologize, but I did want to, um, mention that civil service map last week. Um, and they did, uh, John sits on that and, uh, as a secretary, and the commission did certify our lateral, lateral transfer list for the police department. So we are gonna be working towards filling, uh, the current vacancy that we have. We hope to have that, uh, done as, as quickly as possible to bring us back to, uh, being fully staffed. Also wanna just, uh, commend the fire department. They recently were awarded a $5,000 grant, uh, that will cover, uh, expenses towards new turnout gear. Uh, so that was great, as well as our Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, they had a very busy weekend, uh, this past weekend. Uh, they had an egg event, egg hunt, uh, for the youth that had over 180, um, individuals, pre-registered families. Uh, and then we also had a, um, special needs event down at Ellenwood on Friday night, which was fantastic, involved movies, dances, arts and crafts. And all of that was made possible through the staff's recent, uh, $15,000 grant that was through Calhoun County, uh, Department of, or Developmental Disabilities, Department of Developmental Disabilities. So, uh, kudos to all of our, our directors, um, and department heads, uh, and all their staff for going out and, um, getting these grants, uh, the initiative to go after these grants, and obviously to provide, um, the events that, that Parks and Rec are. And if you haven't, uh, keep checking this, uh, the program, the winter-spring program guide. There's a lot of new information or new programs that are gonna be available. Also, uh, just a reminder, we have, um, the, uh, May 2nd, 2023 primary that's gonna be taking place. There are three polling locations, uh, within the City of Bedford, Bedford High School, uh, the Ellenwood Center once again, and Glendale Primary School. This information will be available, um, on our website. Um, if you need to find out where your polling location is, you can, uh, obtain that information, um, at BedfordOH.gov. Also, uh, there's gonna be some information going out to everyone from NOPEC. Uh, the out, out letters will once again be, uh, uh, sent out. And there's also, uh, and this will be available on our social media, we'll post this. Um, NOPEC is hosting some informational meetings. Um, some of them are in person, but some of them are virtual as well. So, um, there's been a lot of, uh, change. NOPEC sent out some information last year, um, you know, where they turned the accounts back over to First Energy for the benefit of the consumer. Um, but they're actually locking into some lower rates again, and a lot of that'll be, uh, discussed in the letters and in the informational meetings. So, check out our, our social media pages, uh, for those times, um, and those can be beneficial. Uh, lastly, just a friendly reminder, chipper service started, uh, this week, um, and we are once again, uh, providing that service the first full week of every month, uh, through October. So please, uh, if you need that service, contact the service department to get on the list. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Lord, I just wanna wish everybody a happy Easter and, uh, end of report. Thank you. Adam Lord, or Finance Director.
Getting all sorts of titles. Just one quick announcement, just a reminder that the filing deadline for municipal income taxes is April 18th this year, um, for your, um, 2022 taxes.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders? I did go first.
Uh, okay, I just wanna, I wish everybody a happy Easter. Uh, this is a sign of spring finally budding out. Hopefully, we're done with the snow for a while, though, you know, April can be tricky, but you know it isn't gonna last if it does get some. But wish everybody a happy Easter and hope everybody gets their families together and whatnot, and everybody has a good time. On that Northfield Road Bridge, Mike, they're replacing the joints in the pavement too, so I'm quite sure that that project probably will build a full length of time. So it doesn't surprise me that they pushed it to July when they realized, uh, that it was gonna be a more than a one-year project. So it's, it's gonna be a headache, especially considering Broadway is gonna be, we haven't gotten a date on that bid yet that we...
Sorry. Uh, the, they're getting ready to award. They did have, uh, they conducted the bids. Um, I had, I included some of that information in the memo. Uh, last week, there is a chance that we will see, um, some additional expenses. I'm trying to clarify that, uh, and see what ODOT can cover out of that. But, um, it should be awarded by middle of the month, and then pre-con will be, uh, shortly after that.
That's good. The sooner they get Broadway going now, the better off we'll, or less conflict we'll have between Northfield and, and that one. But, uh, then the Northfield Road Bridge will possibly run into the Union Street via the construction, depending on what they decide to do with that. But that one's still up in the air. But, uh, so we're gonna have a lot of infrastructure work here in the next couple of years, which is a good thing, because, uh, anytime you can get most of it hopefully paid for by others, it does take a bite out of, uh, our pocketbooks too, but, uh, it's for the better. The other thing. Anyway, the chipper service, are, are our guys grinding them just, or only just the ones that get called? Because there's a lot of extra tree lawn ones, especially with the recent storms, that people are just tossing them out there, and I'm quite sure they're not calling it in.
Yeah, we'll make a pass throughout, throughout the entire town, but it, it's beneficial. Um, and it helps us, obviously, during storms, we always, uh, canvass the town and we'll try to collect debris that's out. But in the months that there isn't a storm, it's good to get the public in the habit of calling, because we can get that, we can get through much quicker.
Yes, 'cause then you can formulate a schedule and coordinate between which ones or which, and which aren't, so. All right, that's it.
Thank you. Actually, I'm gonna go next, because I'm gonna steal some of your thunder, Sandy.
That's okay.
Councilwoman Spinks and I were invited, uh, this past Saturday to the, uh, Abidiyah Muslim Church up here on Center Road for a, um...
Unity.
Unity, unity dinner. And I, I was quite amazed. I've, I've been there before, and, uh, they're just great people up there. And, uh, they, uh, talked about their philosophies. Uh, we got to hear from their, um, head person, be like the pope on either, um...
Leader.
Yeah, their leader. I'm sorry, I forget his name, but, uh, they were saying all the good things. Uh, and, uh, the one guy then was going over some of the stuff in the Quran and said, all this peace and all this kinda stuff. He said, "So when you see Muslims that are in the name of Allah and they're doing the work of the Quran," he said, "and they're killing people," he said, "no, that's nowhere in the Quran to kill people." And they're, they're for peace, and like I said, they've been up there since 87, and, uh, never had an incident up there. Like I said, great people. And then, uh, after the, uh, meeting, they invited us to stay for dinner and home-cooked that the, uh, the wives brought in. Oh, it was delicious. Uh, it was really good. Bob got to be there with me. They, they still do, the, the men are on one side, the women are on the other, but, you know, that's their, their belief, so. But, uh, we had a great meal, and, uh, they said, you know, "They need to be a little more visible in our town." Some people, they, they seem to think Muslim up there, and right away you get the wrong connotation of what they're about. And, uh, like I say, just, just really, really nice people. They were so hospitable to us, uh, it was, it was terrific. And I also wanna mention the Easter egg hunt that Mike did, that, uh, there was 5,000 eggs, plastic eggs with little prizes in them, spread out, and they had three different age groups, so the little kids weren't getting run over by the big kids. But 5,000 eggs, they said, "Go," and within 10 minutes, there was nothing on the field. It was at the high school and the athletic, there was nothing there. It was like somebody came with a huge vacuum. Every little thing was picked up, other than the little markers to, to divide their lanes. Uh, it was incredible to watch these kids go out there and, especially the little, little ones. I get such a kick out of them, picking an egg up and running around with egg. Parents are saying, "No, no, get smart." But, uh, it was a good day, and then I wanna commend our Recreation Department. They, they do a great job every year putting that together. And, uh, and I wanna piggyback on the NOPEC. You know, they, they took a big risk last year when they took their customers and gave them back to First Energy, the ones that were on First Energy, because First Energy was so much cheaper than what they were locked into. And they took a huge risk that a lot of people were, were mad at them, "Oh, they're terrible." But, but they did what they were supposed to, for the benefit of the community, to put us back to, uh, First Energy. Now, the First Energy is gonna be going up to like 10 cents a kilowatt or something, and, and they're locked in at 6 cents now. Okay, so that's why the opt-out letter. You're, you're in unless you wanna opt out. I'm staying in. I've been a customer of NOPEC since they started, and our city sponsors them. It's a great organization, and, uh, they, they do good things. Like I said, it was a tough move to get rid of customers, but hopefully they'll get everybody back, and, uh, they do some good things. We've gotten many grants over the years from them to do a lot of energy stuff around the city that we couldn't have done. So, uh, like I say, I, I personally would say stay in NOPEC. Sometimes they're not exactly the lowest, but they, they kinda go up and down slowly, where some of these, uh, other companies, and there's gonna be a lot of people knocking on doors, and they have to have a permit from the police department to go door to door. So if they show up at your door, ask them to see their permit from the police department. Because when they come to my door, I ask them, they, they always hold up their badge. "Oh, I got my, my badge from the electric company." Well, that don't cut it. Go to the police department and, uh, get registered for the protection of, uh, our citizens, so that, when they come to a door, especially the elderly, and they can hold up the city pass that their, their permit, then, uh, people know they're legitimate. And don't ever give them your account number, ever. Because these people write your account number, next thing you know, uh, you're signed up for this whatever company it is, and they, they come out with a low rate, and about two or three months later, they're triple what everybody else is. So be very, very careful about who you sign up with. Mayor Fagney? Yes.
There won't be some political candidates walking around. They do not need a permit to, uh, campaign, just so, but they, the next month, they'll probably be circulating to, just so they're aware, so.
Political and religious do not have to be, uh, registered. Anyhow, that's enough for me. Mrs. Spinks?
Well, Mayor, it is still a little bit of my bedroom, but not a whole bunch. It was, uh, it was odder, um, I've become real good friends with a couple of ladies there, the mosque and us, and, uh, Jeff, they, they, um, were still reaching out to heaven, because they did not know, they don't follow, they do a lot, so they were sending stuff, and that's probably why they were. So I told them to make sure that they reach out to you. They're always looking to do something, the women and men both are always looking to do something for their community, whether it's giving school clothes or giving, helping out with school supplies. They know they've helped me out the last couple of years. Of course, COVID, you know, stopped a lot of stuff, and they're back in the swing of doing things. They help out a lot. That's what I really love about our city, is on Center Road a lot, look, we have a mosque, we have a Catholic church, we have Church Nazarene, we have a Baptist, we have a Methodist. We have somebody, and the new one was, is that Assembly of God? What's the new one that's up on the hill?
Say, Ujith?
Where's that Ujith was?
Church of Christ.
Church of Christ. So there's so many, and they all, just like Saturday night when they had, because the mosque doesn't have a very big parking lot, well, the Baptist church next door, they, they said, "Sure, you know, use it." It was supposed to be a unity where the last one that I went to, they had a rabbi there, they had a priest there, they had pretty much all the, um, preacher's priests and, uh, all the denominations for this one day of just coming together, of we're all here on earth and kinda did the same thing to help. And it was just so peaceful, and as the mayor said, you know, when people say something about a Muslim, you think terrorists. Well, that's what they're trying to get out the community to say, and I know the kids are kids, there's Muslim kids that go, um, to school, and they're, they're very, this kinda understood. So I've become very good friends, our, our pastors reached out as well, so. Yet again, the chance, uh, Jeff, they're always there on Saturday. That's when they have, and the door's always open. The women do go on one side, the men go, you go in the front door. And, you know, I was kind of, it was kind of nice, me and Marilyn, the mayor's wife went, and we kinda liked just being over, and the boys went over to the other side, but there was a mess-up. I don't know if you've had Indian food lately? Indian food, and it, it was, it could get kinda spicy. Well, the ladies had made some non-spicy and some spicy. Well, the guys got the non-spicy, and those girls got the spicy. And it was, we were, there was a little bit of sweating going on at 9 o'clock at night, because, because of Ramadan, they had to wait till sundown. It's a whole big faith that they go through, and it was, it was really nice to be invited, um, to do that. So, uh, again, Jeff reached out to them. Um, they're really looking to do things in our community to help out, um, with, uh, food or whatever needs to be helped out with. Um, kudos again to the rec department. Everything they do is just, it's, um, they're doing a great job down there. Uh, hats off to everybody that picked us in, and it was real neat. Some of the people from the senior club, they were awesome. They were helping out Saturday, that's nice that they got them, um, involved, and I believe some of the senior group went to a monsters game, and one of the ladies got to ride the Zimboni that was all over Facebook. She was pretty excited about that. Another great thing, if you're at that age, the senior group, while we did, seniors at your door.
I was there. I didn't there since I joined.
Okay. Well, I know, well, it's a bit, it's, it's...
Free meal.
Yeah. Let's see. So next, uh, next Friday, our speaker series at Bedford Historical Society is gonna be our very own Rick Faco, talking about artists here, and Rick is amazing. He's done a lot of stuff that you see around the city. You know, Mike, didn't he just do something for the city?
Uh, he did a rendering of the old bridge over the biaduct that we're looking to recreate.
Yeah. And Rick is also, he's our vice president there at the Historical Society, and he's one of our, he has done so much, um, with some of the renovations and stuff that we're doing in-house at the Historical Society. If you haven't been there lately, go up there, um, because there's a lot of stuff. The gift shop is hopping, Moore's doing a fantastic job. Uh, Betsy Lee is our director now, got a lot of new programs coming up. Speaker series is every second Friday. We're underway getting ready for the car show. We'll be back at the Strawberry Festival. It won't be, we are not shutting down town, down. It's gonna be on the back parking lots, which is gonna be very nice. And, um, so that's coming back, so that will be June 9th, 10th, and 11th. And Mike, I did see him out today on Crestwell Dominion, was out doing spraying the grass, and, uh, there's a couple of curbs that they had to fix that they messed up during the stuff, so, um, the neighbors were real happy about that. Uh, Trees Down took out power last weekend on Crestwell. Thanks to the neighbors that pitched in, they were out from Saturday to Wednesday. The one street, rather large street, uh, tree hit one that hit another, sparked a lot. The, it was a pretty loud, I was having to be at a birthday party two streets over and heard it when it hit. And, um, pretty scary for those people. They were out of electricity for a couple, uh, from Saturday, like I said, from Saturday to Wednesday. But the neighbors pitched in, helped everybody out, and, um, it's nice to see a couple trees down this weekend as well with the weather. But, uh, hope everybody has a very happy Easter. If you get a chance, drive down Grand Boulevard. Easter did though up again at 265 Grand Boulevard. Uh, I kinda go crazy decorating for all the kids, um, in my front yard. So if you get a chance, kids, stop, take pictures, just don't walk them along. You'll squash eggs, because there's about 900 of them out there. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Janudas? Thank you.
Your report.
Mr. Lou Hardy? I just wanna remember, you forgot something.
Oh.
No, her. April 24th is the first of the ward meetings.
Oh, I was saying that.
Are you there? Um, you had too much cheer on Saturday night.
Okay. Not cheer, not cheer.
Ward three, ward one will be, uh, the ward meeting. Trying to think what, uh, else. Oh, you've got, Easter, you've got candy inside?
No.
I'm not stopping. Happy Easter, everybody, and, uh, uh, go Yukon. End of report. Mr. Smith?
Um, good evening. As was mentioned, the ward meetings are gonna be starting pretty soon here. 1 and 3, 24th of April, um, wards two and four, 8th of May, and wards five and six, 22nd of May. Um, in saying that, um, the, the boundaries have changed in the city as far as, um, mailing or the wards have changed. So how would, how would, uh, how would that be put out to, to the residential? Will, will the city do that, or?
Yeah, Board of Elections. Board of Elections will. Um, there is one piece that I will check to see if the county hasn't updated yet or not. There's a, a great, um, tool on our website where you can go in there and enter in your address, and it'll give you specific information as far as, um, school information, council representative, ward, uh, or voting precincts, all of that is listed. Um, now, I don't know if the county has, because we, as a...
We did.
It's on our website, but we pulled data from Calhoun County, so...
From last week, it hasn't been updated.
Okay, it has not been updated yet.
From last week, I don't know why.
Okay, I, I will check on that, but that's one way where individuals can find out. But Board of Elections will also be...
We sit in this area.
Mayor, it's my understanding that, that, you know, the new wards won't take effect this election, because they've already sent out, uh, probably absentee ballots, and, and they've already prepared their printing. So the November election will be when the new wards take, take effect. So, so where, where were you, wards you were in last time, voted at, location, my understanding?
Oh, they give...
They were, they changed the location.
I just got it from the mail today.
Got you, got you.
You know, that was, that was the reason why I was asking, because I know in, uh, November, I have to run again, so I was just wondering how, when are we gonna put that out? So I guess the May, May is good, so, but November, um, we should have that out. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Asbury?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to, to mention it again, uh, the computer and the hazardous waste roundup, uh, two weeks, April 17th through 21st and April 24th through 28th, and it's at the service garage on 100 Solon Road. Uh, drop-off times are 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. There's no after-hour drop-offs. Do you know, they usually throw a Saturday in there for the people that, that can't make it during the week, and I didn't see it listed.
Yeah, I will find that out tomorrow. I was wondering, as you were saying that, I was referencing, but I'll check and I'll put that out, in this week's memo, and I will also post that information online.
Uh, second, uh, Saturday, May 13th, BDA's 5th Annual Chocolate Walk. Tickets officially went on sale yesterday, and those are available at BedfordDowntown.org. There's a link that will take you right to the Eventbrite site to purchase tickets. Uh, there will be 200 walk tickets and 50 prize tickets available. Uh, five main prizes and then 50 of the prize pool prizes. So get your tickets. Uh, hopefully we sell out. Broadway was mentioned. Parents, I wanna, I wanna, I want you to talk to your kids, parents, grandparents, guardians. Uh, it seems like, and it's not a new trend, because I'm sure we've all done it at one time or another when we were kids, but ding-dong ditch, uh, where you go up and knock on a door and run. Uh, seems kinda harmless, uh, but there have been several reports around the neighborhood lately. Uh, there was one Friday night where a group of kids, I don't know if they meant to do it or not, but a, one of the houses, the front door, older aluminum door with the bottom panel, got completely pushed in. Again, it may have been accidental, or it may have been on purpose, I don't know. But if it was, either way, that's criminal damaging for youth, and we don't want that, right? So, uh, there was a couple of reports in Garfield today also. Um, I don't know if its kids are out of school, you know, for Easter break or spring break or whatever, and it's just kinda bored. Talk to them and have them not do that, please, because you don't wanna a record on your 10 or 11-year-old's uh, record, you know? don't want a record on your 10 or 11-year-old's record, you know, for criminal damaging at such a young age. Plus, you don't want them to damage other people's property. So have a talk with your kids. We had, had some, some wicked weather the last couple of weekends, and from what it looks like, there's a possibility of some storms, maybe some severe storms on Wednesday, and some high winds. So keep an eye on that. And have a happy Easter. End of report.
Thank you. Let's finish up our new business. Ordinance number 29-23.
An ordinance providing for the adoption of new matter in the codified ordinances of Bedford to approve, adopt, and enact the February 2023 replacement pages to the codified ordinance of Bedford, Ohio, to repeal certain ordinances in conflict therewith or deemed obsolete and declaring an emergency. And I believe it also includes the charter amendments, so.
Yeah, this is something we do twice a year, just to keep our records current. I have a motion for suspension by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Asbury.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes. Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Smith. That's what it is. Just update our codified ordinance. Our, our books that we have here are up to date, and it does get posted online. And it'll be, and our clerk takes care of all of that and keeps us up to date. Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Asbury.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes. Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Janutus. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an IT upgrade, as stated in the ordinance. It was something that we met with the, our IT company earlier this year. The existing firewall is nearing its end of life, and that does cover all of the city hall operations as well as fire department. Police department is on a separate server, and thus they have a separate firewall. That was all, those upgrades took place a couple of years ago. So this is the next step in what is recommended we tap. And it was included in the appropriations, Finance Director included that in the appropriations ordinance that was approved at the last council meeting.
Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Asbury.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes. And now we have the hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address, and your comments. Seeing none. I have a motion for adjournment by Saunders, second by Asbury. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Asbury.
Yes.